To give us about a week to be able to do that.
Mayor, I'd like to enter a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 12E and have that tabled until Tuesday, January the 28th, meeting for discussion.
I second.
Thank you. So moved until we are seconded, I'd like to call, vote all those in favor of adjourned work session, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind giving us five minutes before we start our regular meeting this evening. Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. So moved until we are seconded, I'd like to call, vote all those in favor of adjourned work session, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind giving us five minutes before we start our regular meeting this evening. Thank you.
The legal organ thing, we have to send that out by Thursday?
It'll be a special call meeting, so technically there's 24 hours on that. But because we're announcing it at this meeting publicly, that serves notice to the community and the staff, so she'll get that out tomorrow in time. All right, thank you. That takes us to item, actually, item seven, which are presentations and acknowledgements. We do have a finance report that is being curated by our team and will be presented by our city manager. Ms. Manager, are you ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, the floor is yours.
Are they able to show for the public? That's gonna be hard to read for the public. Trust me, we got paper documents out there on the table, and if anyone ever needs a copy of this report, be glad to it. I don't think anybody can see that. I got myself here our finance contractor, Ms. Dawn Glynn, who's done such a great job, Mayor, Council, holding down finances, keeping us balanced, making sure things accounted for. So we made a commitment to this council to come back and do quarterly reports. And so what you have before you is our second quarter report. Our fiscal year starts July 1st, and so we're six months within our fiscal year from the date of your adopted spending plan. So this is just a report to date where we are in six months. And Dawn has, again, I want to give a shout out to Dawn. She works very hard in putting all this together. Her numbers are great. She'll chase down 38 cents if she have to. And I'm just very confident in where we are with these numbers. We're actually looking pretty good. So let's jump right into it. You have two reports in front of you. One is a statement of activities for our second quarter, taking care of the month of October, November, and December of 2024, which is our second quarter FY 2025. You can see, I know the public can't see, but I'll read these numbers out to you public. We'll highlight a few things that are very interesting.
Hey, Mr. Manager. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think you may have mentioned it. Are there more copies?
Yes, there are copies, and I can wait if someone wants to get some copies.
Allison, will you get? She's already on it. Thank you.
Is this also available on Civic Clerk?
Yes, Civic Clerk, if you can get there. I know this ain't working. Can anyone read that? Y'all can go back to the Mableton screen then.
So Allison in the back has one. If you will raise your hand, she'll make sure you get one. Sorry, Mr. Manager.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. It's really for the attendees, so I want to make sure they can follow. You should have, one is a statement of activities by month, and the other one is a statement of activities by month, but FY 25, quarter two and quarter one comparison.
One is a breakdown, and one is?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferguson. One just shows the second quarter, October, November, and December, and the other one shows our entire six months, both first quarter and second quarter comparison, where we are year to date. And we are going to come back, I've been working with Dawn, probably at our February 10th work session, and we're going to measure up our spending plan on where we are in terms of how much we spend in each category. So we'll come back on February 10th to do this. But this is the committed quarterly report. So if we can proceed, the motor vehicle tax, TAV, tax, Avalon tax, again, October, about $221,780 came in, November, 247. So we're averaging somewhere north of $200,000 a month for TAVT. To date, we're at over $677,000 we've collected for motor vehicle TAVT, tax, Avalon tax. Our franchise fees from electrical, we, somewhere there, $110,000 this quarter, on average, somewhere between 20 and 50,000 a month. Hotel motel, six months, we've got, I'm sorry, this quarter, we collected $130,646. And then another one, I think you may get some more information on when Juliana comes up, is our business license, our occupational tax revenue. We are making subtle adjustments to reporting this. Right now, we're not reporting, we're reporting the net amount, is that correct, Dawn? We're gonna start reporting the gross amount. The net amount will show the fees that are incurred for our credit card services when people pay online. So this is just our net, but we will eventually start showing our gross and reflect those credit card charges as expenses. $101,169,865 for the second quarter. And Juliana, I'm not going to steal her thunder, but she will give you some very good news on our occupational tax and our business license collection. Moving down to expenditures, you can see more staff. Last quarter, we went in October, $46,884 that month for wages, and now we're up to nearly $90,000 in December. So for the last quarter, we spent $209,000 on salary and wages. That's reflective of increasing in staff as we begin to transition services. Legal services, we have for the quarter, $61,149. That was the last quarter. And then you go down to operating expense, most of this stuff is just normal. There's one that stands out, and I believe, Dawn, that professional service at 132 in October, yeah, we may have to research that. That may have been our first big payment to some of our contractors for our buildouts, which are nearly complete. But we will verify that and come back.
Was that the site survey?
Site survey? No, sir, no, sir. It was, we started, we pretty much have got 6116 just about done and complete, so we got a lot of money that went there. And there's a suspicion there, but Dawn's gonna find it out. We make sure we bring that. That was a high amount in October, but overall, professional service is 283,610. We will get with the Epicenter Dr. Boyd to ensure that the venue is available. If not, we'll seek other venues. Thank you, ma'am.
With that... The legal organ thing, we have to send that out by Thursday?
It'll be a special call meeting, so technically there's 24 hours on that. But because we're announcing it at this meeting publicly, that serves notice to the community and the staff, so she'll get that out.
Okay.
Tomorrow in time. All right, thank you. That takes us to item, actually, item seven, which are presentations and acknowledgements. We do have a finance report that is being curated by our team, and will be presented by our city manager. Ms. Manager, are you ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please. The floor is yours.
Are they able to show for the public? That's going to be hard to read for the public. Trust me. We got paper documents out there on the table, and if anyone ever needs a copy of this report, be glad to it. I don't think anybody can see that. I got myself here our finance contractor, Ms. Dawn Glynn, who's done such a great job, Mayor, Council, holding down finances, keeping us balanced, making sure things accounted for. So we made a commitment to this council to come back and do quarterly reports. And so what you have before you is our second quarter report. Our fiscal year starts July 1st, and so we're six months within our fiscal year from the date of our, your adopted spending plan. So this is just a report to date where we are in six months. And Dawn has, again, I want to give a shout out to Dawn. She works very hard in putting all this together. Her numbers are great. She'll chase down 38 cents if she have to. And I'm just very confident in where we are with these numbers. We're actually looking pretty good. So let's jump right into it. You have two reports in front of you. One is a statement of activities for our second quarter, taking care of the month of October, November, and December of 2024, which is our second quarter FY 2025. You can see, I know the public can't see, but I'll read these numbers out to you public. We'll highlight a few things that are very interesting.
Hey, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think you may have mentioned it. Are there more copies?
Yes, there are copies, and I can wait if someone wants to get some copies.
Allison, will you get, she's already on it. Thank you.
Is this also available on Civic Clerk?
Yes, Civic Clerk, if you can get there. I know this ain't working. Can anyone read that?
No.
Y'all can go back to the Mableton screen then.
So Allison in the back has one. If you will raise your hand, she'll make sure you get one. Sorry, Mr. Manager.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. It's really for our attendees, so I want to make sure they can follow. You should have, one is a statement of activities by month, and the other one is a statement of activities by month, but FY 25, quarter two and quarter one comparison.
One is a breakdown and one is...
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferguson. One just shows the second quarter, October, November, and December, and the other one shows our entire six months, both first quarter and second quarter comparison, where we are year-to-date. And we are going to come back, I've been working with Dawn, probably at our February 10th work session. We're going to measure up our spending plan on where we are in terms of how much we spend in each category. So we'll come back on February 10th to do this, but this is the committed quarterly report. So if we can proceed, the motor vehicle tax, TAV, tax, Avalon tax, again, October, about $221,780 came in. November, 247. So we're averaging somewhere north of $200,000 a month for TAVT. To date, we're at over $677,000 we've collected for motor vehicle TAVT, tax, Avalon tax. Our franchise fees from electrical, we, somewhere there, $110,000 this quarter. On average, somewhere between 20 and 50,000 a month. Hotel motel, six months, we've got, I'm sorry, this quarter, we collected $130,646. And then another one, I think you may get some more information on when Juliana comes up, is our business license, our occupational tax revenue. We are making subtle adjustments to reporting this. Right now, we're not reporting, we're reporting the net amount. Is that correct, Dawn? We're going to start reporting the gross amount. The net amount will show the fees that are incurred for our credit card services when people pay online. So this is just our net, but we will eventually start showing our gross and reflect those credit card charges as expenses. $101,116,986 for the second quarter. And Juliana, I'm not going to steal her thunder, but she will give you some very good news on our occupational tax and our business license collection. Moving down to expenditures, you can see more staff. Last quarter, we went in October, $46,884 that month for wages, and now we're up to nearly $90,000 in December. So for the last quarter, we spent $209,000 on salary and wages. That's reflective of increasing in staff as we begin to transition services. Legal services, we have for the quarter, $61,149. That was the last quarter. And then you go down to operating expense, most of this stuff is just normal. There's one that stands out. And I believe, Dawn, that professional service at 132 in October, yeah, we may have to research that. That may have been our first big payment to some of our contractors for our build-outs, which are nearly complete. But we will verify that and come back.
Was it the site survey?
Site survey? No, sir. No, sir. It was, we started, we pretty much have got 6116 just about done and complete, so we got a lot of money that went there. There's a suspicion there, but Dawn's going to find it out. We make sure we bring it. That was a high amount in October, but overall, professional services, 283,610. I don't see anything else here that's very noteworthy. You have the report, but just go down to the bottom, and then I'll let Dawn make a few comments. If you go down to the bottom, you see for the second quarter, we brought in nearly $2 million, $1,954,62, 954,62, and we expended right at $1 million for the quarter. Giving us a surplus for that quarter, $944,235. It's always a good thing when we spend less than we bring in. That means we're, you know, when you're able to, sometimes with government, you want to balance and spend what you bring in, but we're actually starting to build up more reserves. So I'll stop there and say, Dawn, did you have any comments on the second quarter?
I'd like to just address interest revenue. We had recorded September and October because we were working through our transition to our new system. So that's why you'll see a little bit less at that time. Some of the major differences, you can see, we started our retirement, and that is the contributions and payment of $15,378. And our one-time payment for workers' comp for the year is the $14,346. Legal services, we have external, which is Troutman Pepper, and then internal is our, from the attorney.
And I want to add, if you want to know what our external legal services is, that is the ongoing lawsuit for the city, and that we have legal representation, representation. That's what our Troutman does for the external.
Correct. I'm going to look into the professional services. As Mr. Tanks said, I may need to reclass some of the expenses for the build-out of our one location that was charged there. I will get the amount and report it to you. The other thing I wanted to point out is, in our old system, we were recording all of the office rent and rental equipment in one account, and I broke it out to break out rental equipment office, and you're going to see the $25,000 in rental equipment. I need to reclass that to rental expense, and I will do that. That's on the rental equipment line. You're going to see $24,000 in the first quarter, which needs to be reclassed to office expense. And that was due to our migration from our system and to BSNA, which caused the difference.
If you're trying to follow, Dawn, she is on the second report. I gave the quarter, October, November, December. She is showing quarter one compared to quarter two, and that's where some of these notes that she's speaking out, they are written into that. If you, can you see that, that she's explaining, just in case you're trying to follow.
Okay. And I think I have given explanations, like for quarter one to two for city dues and fees. I broke out the charges in the second quarter, which was the Georgia Municipal Association, African American, and National League of Cities, which totaled 34.4, which is the big, most of the big difference. We now have an employee contribution fee, which is in the second quarter, which is labeled employee dues and fees, which started this quarter. And I think if you have any other questions, please ask.
And then, as she went into that report, you can see for quarter one, quarter two, FY 25, that's October through, I'm sorry, that is July through September, quarter one, and then October to December is quarter two. So year-to-date, we've collected $1,460,600 in tax Avalon, skipping some of these smaller amounts. Electric franchise fees, $538,400. Hotel motel, $256,862. Our business license, $1,311,263. That is collected in six months. Juliana will explain that a little bit more in detail. Total revenue for our first half of the year, two quarters, is $3,749,164. And you can see your expenses. Dawn explained most of the expenses. Payroll for six months is right at about $473,321. And then our legal services for six months, right at $262,889. Our professional services for the six months, there's a lot of stuff we're doing, especially with our Grice Consulting, our build-outs, and as Dawn said, we're going to reclass some of this to capital, to show the build-out of a building. And then the contract labor, stuff that we use, different folks, like here at Ironworks, and some of the work we're still doing through Denmark, Ashby Walker. And if I skip down to something else that stands out, city dues and fees, explaining that, GMA was up. It was a big one. And payment to other agencies, you'll see at the bottom, $100,000, that was our transfer to our Mableton Development Authority. So overall...
Can you say that one more time?
I'm sorry. That $100,000 was our transfer to the Mableton Development Authority.
Got you.
That was a big one. Yes, sir. Thanks for asking. And so for our first six months of this fiscal year, we can say we had $3,749,164 that came in, and we've only spent $1,857,707, giving us a surplus for the first half of the year, $1,891,458, nearly almost $2 million. So, and then our fund balance remains healthy. Even after the purchase of land, we're still north of $3 million that's sitting in the bank. And so this is operating, and we're still at surplus. So I'm still very confident, really appreciate Dawn's hard work, that our finances are looking strong, and we're keeping up with things, and we're still bringing in more than we're spending. So at this time, we'll pause and answer. Any questions from the council?
I would just, first off, like to say, thank you for putting this together. Thank you, Dawn, for your hard work. I see you in and out of the office every day, making sure that every single dollar and cent we have is accounted for. So I definitely do appreciate that. Whether you or the manager can speak to where we're trending to budget thus far this year, especially on some of the major items. I'm assuming for our salaries, we're obviously trending well below our budgeted amount.
Yes, sir. We're actually going to come back and do that trend report February 10th, but Dawn has already given me a glimpse. And some of our budgets, where you look at where we should have spent 50% of the projected spending plan, we haven't spent 10%. Salaries, again, and that was intentional. We overestimated our salaries.
Indeed.
And we underestimated revenue, overestimated expenses, which gives you a healthy budget. So we're trending pretty good. There's some revenues that have not come in that we'll show on that report, where, you know, there's things that we didn't collect that we expected to collect. But overall, we're trending very well. I think we were 55%, Dawn?
Yes.
On, which one was that? The business, was it business license?
Yes.
Yes. We're at 55, no, we were at 90%. Matter of fact, let me stop.
Don't steal that thunder.
Right. Don't steal our thunder.
Yeah, that's revenue report. I apologize. We're trending well.
To that point, when we come back in, for the next quarterly report, that'll be March or April?
What is that? It's January, February, March. It'll be April.
It'll be April. So will you then come with the expenditures expected for the rest of the fiscal spending plan?
You mean forecast on that?
So February 10th, actually, we're going to show the spending plan as you all adopted it. And then we're going to show where we're trending to date with that spending plan. For example, if...
But I also want to know, what is the expected for the rest of the time?
Oh, yeah, projected.
The forecast.
Forecast.
Yeah, it'll be on there. Yes, sir. Yep, projected. You can pretty much, especially with revenues, you can project based on quarter, what we see the average. But the expenses, some of them are seasonal, and so, but that's why we look at it quarterly. So yes, sir, we'll be able to project where we are.
Okay. Because I know we have some capital purchases that have to happen here in the next couple of months.
Yes, sir. We bought our three trucks. I hope we ain't got anything else to buy.
So that's a great point. When you buy your three trucks, where are those going to sit?
Right now, they are here at Epicenter.
No, he's talking to...
On the Capitol.
On the report.
On the report.
Yeah. This has not been captured in first and second quarter because they were purchased January.
In January. Okay. That's the type of stuff I'm looking for.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I had two quick questions. Natural gas franchise taxes, I don't see a number represented in any of the months for October, November, or December of '24.
I think that's Osteo Gas. Amelia, is that an annual payment?
It's a biannual.
Osteo Gas?
The...
Osteo Gas?
It's not a monthly.
There's two options. There's an option to do the agreement, whether they pay quarterly or annually, and then there's the option to not do an agreement, but to pay monthly over the ordinance. And I think they're just paid monthly?
No, we're not.
The reason, the reason I was asking is that on the report, they don't show, there's no funds revenue being shown at all for natural gas.
Yes.
I'm thinking they're either annual, or we can find out. That's a question we need to find.
Your attorney was very cooperative getting this set up, so I can just reach out to him if it's not showing that there's a payment payment.
I guess we kind of need to know for all of them what to expect. So Greystone, George Power, like all of them, what to expect.
From, from...
Greystone, we know that.
Yes, I talked to him yesterday, today as a matter of fact. But yeah, I think this is just projected income, right, or projected revenue.
This is actually...
No, 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 no. I'm saying what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
We're saying, when should certain revenue come in? We're asking specifically for that. So if we're showing three blanks here, there should be some expectation of when that revenue should hit.
So they have not made any payments. Is that Osteo Gas?
When did they make the payment last year?
We'll check that. There's nothing for the second quarter, Amelia. I mean, the first quarter. October, November, December, no payments from natural gas.
For October, November, December?
Right.
Oh, '24.
Yeah.
Yes, '24. Yes, please.
And then I will get back to bill, and if there's any issue, if they're over in capacity, then I'll contact your attorney.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You have another question?
I did. Contract labor, I noticed that in October of '24, or, I'm sorry, November of '24, it was reduced, and then it was, there was a hike. So can you explain that? Was that because of HR?
What line item?
Contract labor, November of '24.
Got you. Got you. The, most of our contract labor right now, we believe, and we're going to verify this, we have some coming out of the city attorney's office. And I think, and I, don't let me, let me find out, because we lost an employee in November.
Right.
Contractor.
Contract employee, and we also... Professional services. Yeah, let us, we'll find out why we had that dip in November.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we got to verify. Yeah, we're verified. There is a dip there. It dropped from down to 649 in November, and then back up to 15,000. This is what he's talking about, contract labor, right here.
Right, because I'd be curious to know if that...
Okay, we're checking. So right down there, looking at that line item. They want to know why that line item was dropped. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
We believe we know why. We didn't get billed.
We will give you the opportunity to find out.
We may not have gotten billed.
That's a possibility as well, just the invoice didn't come in, so.
Because I'm wondering, does that happen in the professional services line? Or is that the contract line?
The contract labor.
All right. Any other questions, council?
No, sir.
No.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate this report, and look to have the next one in February, correct?
February 10th, actually, we're going to do a comparison from our spending plan, how we're trending.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Mr. Njoku, do you want to take the floor and talk about our business license revenue report?
Good evening, council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. All right, well, this is the fun part of the evening. It's where I get, right? Made it all out in the snow just to talk about money, but it's going to be great. Because these are the revenues that we plan to invest to make sure that the city receives the best services possible. And I did want to follow up from the last time when I was here speaking to council. So, good news.
But before you start, ma'am, is this just something we're supposed to be looking at? I see everybody looking around.
Oh, okay. Yes. What I have in front of you, if you can see it, is just a quick summary. This summary is in line with the report that City Manager Tanks put forward as far as what we have collected in total sum for this quarter. And we're tracking in the same line as what is coming in, in our actual intake revenue, which is above 90%.
I'm sorry. Who can see that?
I'm making it out.
The city of Mableton and its feasibility studies had projected by this time in the quarter that we would have collected $1,449,235, according to the report by City Manager Tanks, that you can see on the first spreadsheet that he had. We are already at $1,311,263, which is above 90% of our projection in only two quarters. This is great news for our city, and the number that you're looking here, this is the total. So these are things that are still also in process, checks and all other processing items. But this is a business license revenue that has come in. The last projected number that was received from Cobb County indicated that at this particular point, by our second quarter or end of year, that we, they had collected roughly around $3 million. And as the end of the quarter, we are $2.9 million, with roughly a deficit of just a little bit under $200,000. And we still have checks that are clearing every day. This means that our projections are strong as far as what we're able to bring in for the revenue base from business licensing. We credit that, and this summary talks about the fact that although we may have had some challenges in onboarding staff, and I do want to really speak about the fact that we got two great staff members. Nyree Simpson and Nicole Sewell, the two permitting techs, really embraced the model that I talked to about the end of the year, which was really proactive customer service. These two ladies are meeting people at the door. They're on your email probably two minutes after you've pressed send. They are calling you back on the phone. They are writing you back about your missing documents. They are sitting with you. Pretty much most of my office is now a notary to ensure that you don't have to leave the building to get any document notarized. They are meeting the standards that we are setting for the city of Mableton's quality of service. They are not waiting. They are responding to your questions. They are there to ask any additional questions. And most of all, they're really doing a great job in the cross-partnership we have with Cobb County to make sure that if there's anything that was left behind before you transitioned over to the city of Mableton, that they are calling to ensure that you, that our businesses are having a smooth transition into their new city. These numbers, I cannot take any credit, because putting forth an idea and having your team being able to pick up the ball and make the plays are two different things. And although the idea that we talked about in this renewal season was for us to be a proactive, full-service office, know that we were lean, know that we were small, but definitely trying to be mighty, really was something that these two ladies embrace. These numbers are a reflection of ladies that were willing to walk through storms. These are reflections of ladies who are reading over your emails, and is a reflection of two ladies that were committed to the businesses and almost knowing almost every business owner by name. So if you ever run into these two ladies, these numbers are a reflection of them, and all we can do is get excited about getting more. The city of Mableton is definitely looking to continue to grow in this spirit to make sure that our services are meeting these standards. We're 90%, y'all, with only six months, two quarters, and meeting our feasibility study where we were projecting 1.4, and in two quarters, we're at 1.3, and now all the checks have cleared, is a clear-cut sign about what we can do if we really do it together. if we really do it together, if we really do it with high-quality standards, and if we do, really do it with a proactive approach. So I know that you guys want more details, and I will give you the details. I wanna be able to make those analysis, but I wanted to wait a little while until some more things came in, to make sure that everything was clear, so I could really show you how well, at least for business licenses, business license renewals, and what we're approaching here, really come through. This summary just goes into the aspect that we faced a bit of challenges, because we were transitioning from one tech to two, then training both in cross-functionality, then onboarding um, software, then dealing with the challenges of onboarding new technical software, then also dealing with our way of making sure that we had a direct approach that met our citizens' standards. But we overcame those things, and our plans for next year is to be able to hit the other marks that we have in place. So I want you to walk away today, if you remember nothing else, we're at ninety percent, and we haven't even gotten started.
So, real quick, is this report in a packet that we have? Because I can't see that, just so you know.
Oh.
I can't see anything that is on that screen, nor that screen. I might have bad eyes, but.
Did it, did it not get included?
No, that is mine. I take, I take full responsibility. I was having technical difficulties getting it to Susan. I was able to get it to the technical staff today, but it will be in your packet. But I'm just repeating the major highlights of there. Summarize the two numbers, which talk about what the numbers mean, in line with what um, City Manager Tanks said, that ninety percent of revenues have come in based on our, uh, our feasibility studies, the one point four to the one point three, but the total revenue connect, collected from business license through the renewal period is still tracking with those same numbers. Three million from last year, we're now at two point nine million. And then the next study that you receive, sir, which will, which will be your package, which in great details, will talk about how that tracking has happened from our fiscal year to now, so that we can even look at what we're projecting. Our hope is that also, that in this process, that we will be able to get a real clear count numbers of the total numbers of businesses that are here in the city of Mableton, those that have come in. And surprisingly, the main thing is how many people that have come to actually renew in multiple years, where they were not necessarily had renewed, some as far back as twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, but they have caught up with the customer service approach that we've had. These are gonna start giving us true numbers, as far as how many businesses, which is gonna allow us to be able to project, expect what we'll do next renewal season, improve on what we need to be able to service the new businesses, and be able to be prepared to take on more businesses as we grow as a city. So these are real critical numbers, because this is like the first time that we're having actual data specific to the city of Mableton, that aren't just met with what Cobb County provided us from before. So this is our, us getting essentially our baseline.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Joku, I appreciate it.
I think, uh, no, hold on.
I just dismissed her.
Okay.
You said, "Counsel, any questions?" And they kept talking. Um, so the, and it sounds like we understand the um, what I'll call the good guys in the, in the, um, in the city. So is there also an idea about what those people who aren't as forthcoming, and what that looks like, and what that process looks like?
Absolutely, sir. Revenue recovery is a big part of business licensing. Um, a lot of times, as I'm sure the Director of Code Enforcement can express to you, some people are not educated fully about the process. Some people are still going back and forth between the county and the city, and to be quite frank, some people are just staying away under the radar, hoping nobody knocks on their door. We do have a plan in place as we grow in staff and are moving to permanent buildings, to be able to go out and make it a safe place for people to come in. Currently, the council has done a great thing for the city of Mableton's business community, because they've provided them with an extension up until March, to be able to come in and still renew your licenses, get caught up with your licenses without fa- pay, having to pay additional fees until March. So that gives us an opportunity as the license season, renewal season is hitting a nice plateau, for us to look through our data, now that we're getting baseline data, see who we've not captured, create a list, and, and provide ourselves with an opportunity for a program that we can knock on those doors and say, "It's safe to come outside." And doing business in Mableton is not about brute force, but it's about you being compliant so that you can get the best experience uh, out of the businesses that you want here. And we wanna communicate that, that message. So first things first, for those that were, that were ready to go, those that wanted to renew, those were coming in even through the storm, even through the holidays. But our second thing is to be able to go back and talk about doing business here and knocking on those doors. We would like to be able to see the same number, A-rating, above ninety percent compliance from the businesses that are registered here, and that's gonna be our gold standard for ourselves. So yes, sir, you can look forward to that in future reports.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Give it up for the moneymaker.
Add to our, uh, next item, our presentation is a staff relocation report. Mr. Manager, are you prepared to do that?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Actually, our, our future administrative supervisor, Mrs. Lily Smith, was supposed to do this report, but she hasn't been feeling well lately, so.
Understood.
Keep in your thoughts, but we will get her on one of the next meetings, she will, we do a report. Uh, she did put it together, and we just want our, our citizens and the council to know our progress and our plan for moving, uh, and moving into our facility. So twelve forty-five Veterans Memorial Highway, the building is now fully framed. You will not have a copy of this report. Okay, so this is just a verbal report. So twelve forty-five VMH is our location for our administrative building. It's gonna house our finance, HR, IT, communications, all those non-public-facing operations. And that building now, uh, approximately five thousand square feet, has been fully framed, started low voltage wiring, and next week, we should have sheet rock and insulation up there. We anticipate moving in there late March. Late March. Currently, six one one six, Mableton Parkway, right across the street from the Popeye's Chicken. That's where our code enforcement and our community development offices will be. They were actually putting furniture in yesterday. If you get a chance, go by there, I'll show, I'll give you the key code, and you go pick it starting. It has really been trans- transformed from an empty shell. Our fire marshal, I know that the fire marshal's boss is back there, but uh, the fire marshal conducted inspection today, and the building passed of the inspection, so thank you, uh, Cobb Fire, for not ginging us, digging, so dinging us. Plumbers scheduled a ride tomorrow to complete advanced plumbing, and the counties expect, expected to conduct their final inspection on Friday. What does this mean? Uh, we should have our certificate of occupancy to be issued by the end of next week, and at that point, we'll be moving staff out of the epicenter. That's Juliana's staff, Community Development, and Alejandro's code enforcement staff. They'll be moving over to six one one six to start getting ready to establish services effective March third. So, uh, Cobb Works, I don't know if you all are familiar, they are, they're gonna have their um, facility available for us as we still grow in staff. We don't have seats and desks for them. Um, we're expecting to start moving in there, at least take up some space. I will finally get my own desk. I've been hot-desking it now for quite a while. Yeah, I know. Uh, they got some, they gave us some very good rates over there. We're gonna save money. And so that is fifty-six fifty-six Mableton Parkway. If you know what the new Cobb workforce place is, they got offices open to the public. We'll be there. So both of our projects are really progressing smoothly. We should be moving out of here and into our operations building by the end of this week, first part of February, and then hopefully, the rest of the staff will move in March. So that's just a quick report. Uh, we got a plan. We should be announcing to the public, business licenses. We need to get that out. We need to make them know that business licenses will be trans- transferred over to our new facility. We're gonna be able to make sure that folks come here, they know where to go, but that transition will happen in February. So that's our report on our transition and our facilities.
Thank you for that. Um, any challenges that we potentially should know about right now?
It never goes the way we planned, stuff we didn't see. Uh, and uh, internet providers, um, you know, we wanna make sure security is good, space. We have already outgrown our community development space. Uh, the, uh, we, we made provision for our directors to have an office, and then we got four desks, but we're anticipating at least, uh, at least space for a senior planner and a business license supervisor that we did not have come. So some right now, the challenges we are, is being able to work with space, but fortunately, we had plenty of space next door in our code enforcement office, and we'll be able to use some of that until we have other plans in the future. But uh, other than that, no, no major issues. Cobb County um, Fire and Cobb County Community Development, the builders, they've all been very cooperative, helping us get in there. It's a beautiful place. Furnishers installed, looking good.
Great. Thank you, council. We're not there yet. That's all the presentations that we have prepared for this evening. Thank you all for stepping forward and giving us reports about city business. That takes us to item nine. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have about five here.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have them in the order of kinda how I received them, and the first person um, to give me their comment card was China uh, Cartridge. I'm sorry, I don't, not sure how to spell your last name. Cartridge, Cartridge? Cartridge?
Okay. Hi, my name is China Cartridge. I'm a proud product of Mableton. I went to Riverside Elementary, Lindley Middle School, and graduated from Campbell's IB program. I later went to Harvard um, and became a high school principal and a founding charter, of a founding charter school. Currently, I'm a BES fellow, working to establish a free public charter school here in South Cobb, serving grade six through twelfth. This school will focus on academic excellence, character development, and extracurricular opportunities like sports and music, providing our students with the tools they need to thrive both academically and personally in a safe and supportive environment. But I can't do this alone, that's why I'm here. So, uh, building a school that truly serves our community starts with you. I am here tonight to ask for your help in shaping the vision, my vision, into a reality. And so I'm looking for community members who can help. I'm gonna start doing focus groups, um, so that I can get insights of what our students need. Tableting at local events, so if you're interested in tabling, you're really social, that would be really helpful. And then I also need people to be school design members, um, that will help us shape um, the values of our school here. Whether you're a parent, a business owner, or an educator, or simply a person that's passionate about improving opportunities for our kids, your voice and expertise is vital. If you're interested in volunteering, please come speak to me after the meeting, or find me on Facebook. Together, we can build a school that not only uplifts our students, but also strengthens our entire community. Thank you for your time, for all with, that you do in Mableton, and let's make this happen together.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
Our next person is Michael McNeely, and following Michael McNeely is Cassandra Brown, and there's a two-minute time limit. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael McNeely. I'm, I live in District Two. Uh, my, my professional work, I'm a public safety professional, but I'm also an advocate in the community, and thus why I'm here today. It was mentioned about sanitation and holding off a little longer to ha- to have the opportunity for you all to, to consider more information, to work towards an informed decision, so I commend you for that. Oftentimes, when people come and speak, uh, public comment, there's a lot of crit- criticism. But it takes leadership to make these quality decisions, and as we know, sanitation and waste management is a part of the pillars of what the city is to do, and, and the services to provide to, to the residents with, throughout Mableton. And for me, I, I happen to live in a community with an HOA, so there's a predetermined uh, waste management. And so that's a different experience though than others who live in various communities throughout Mableton, and so as an advocate in the community, have the opportunity to talk to a lot of those individuals. And so there's a, there's a common bond amongst the differences that we, that we hear and see in the community. What is the cost? What are individuals paying now? What might they pay once you all make a decision? How will that impact their bottom line, to individuals, to families, especially individuals like our senior citizens who are on a fixed income? Those considerations are important. What is the impact to our businesses, esp- especially our small businesses? How do, how are they profitable, but also how are they able to provide a good service to the citizens? And then there will be monies going towards the city, which can be a great thing, because those monies can go towards beautification in our community, anti-littering, recycling. So there's an opportunity here. The issue of sanitation and waste management is not a new issue, but we have an opportunity to improve upon what we're doing as a city in Mableton. And so as someone who lives here and loves this city, and understands the tough decisions that have to be made by leaders, I'm here to support. I want you to hear that. I thank you for your process. I look forward to you all continuing to, to do the work, hearing from the citizens within the community, and, and making good quality decisions. And at the end of the day, there's nothing that is perfect. So you have the opportunity, as you make those decisions, to tweak them, if you see that improvements need to be made. So thank you, and, and I look forward to seeing what's to come. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Cassandra Brown, and following Ms. Brown is Luther Washington.
Good evening, um, to the mayor and the council, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience here. Uh, I'm Cassandra Brown, and I am with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I'm here to talk to you again about the proposed bus depot at four forty Veterans Memorial Highway. So this is a project of our Board of Education, and uh, to date, uh, we still don't have firm confirmation on exactly what is happening there, so we are continuing as an organization and as a community, to go to the Board of Education, continuing to advocate, to ask that they actually come to Mableton and conduct a public meeting where they can hear from the residents. So to that end, we do have a petition. If you go to mableton.org, you can actually see our petition there. Right now, we have seven hundred and thirty-four people who have signed, so we're definitely close to a thousand. We're trying to get it up over that. And uh, we also would welcome anyone from the community. Uh, please reach out to us if you would like to join us at the Board of Education meetings, where we'll continue to um, let them know that uh, what is happening right now is unacceptable. The fact that they won't engage with us is, is, is not acceptable. And um, you know, we, we would just, uh, you know, welcome your, uh, support and your engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Luther Washington. I'm the executive director and the founder of the Family Life Restoration Center, located sixty-one oh five Mableton Parkway. Been in the community about eighteen and a half years, uplifting families and individuals that find themselves in some of life's toughest challenges. And so I just wanted to come today and just make sure that as leaders, you all know that family life is here to help you. Think about the cold weather that's outside. I think it's kinda sad that we don't have a warming facility in Mableton to take care of those that are homeless. And so as we're putting our city together, I pray that we put something in place to help our homeless. Uh, it's nothing like having a mother and some kids come to you that's sleeping in their car. As you get ready to leave here this evening, when you get to your car, I want you to just stand outside for a minute, and ask yourself the question, "Can I sleep in this?" And if the answer is no, then please, as we're putting our city together, please keep those that need us the most at the forefront of your decision-making. All right? God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Our last card is Denny Wilson.
Good evening. I wanna piggyback on what Luther Washington said with Family Life Restoration Center. A couple of Fridays ago, I spent the evening with Luther and Angela, uh, taking firewood, blankets, and uh, food to people who were homeless, because we, I knew the temperature was dropping. So I even tried to take a fire pit, but they wouldn't take it, because they said if they put the fire pit out, that if the police came, they couldn't carry it with them. So I didn't want to lose my fire pit, so I'm like, "Okay, we'll just go get some firewood." So I didn't want to lose my fire pit, so I'm like, okay, we'll just go get some firewood. So we got firewood, and they were able to put it on the, uh, grill. And we were able to make a good, strong fire for them to, you know, to be able to, um, to be warm. And I told them that if the police, uh, came to bother them, just give them my name. And I would take all the credit for the fire being there, and for them being able to sleep out in the building. And, you know, and I wrote my name on a piece of paper and my phone number, and I left it with them. But what I challenge you guys, saying that you're community activists. We all go home at night and we sleep in a warm bed. There are people out there who are not as fortunate as us, and I begin, I'm beginning to see it more and more. Yesterday, I went out and took food, you know, and made sure that they had food to eat, and also made sure that they had firewood, that they could keep warm by. So what I wanna do here tonight is challenge each one of you. If you see a homeless person, stop and talk to that person. You know, if you can provide them with a blanket, if you can provide them with a coat, if you can provide them with some food, then do it. Because these people are out in the cold, and they have nowhere else to go. And it's such a shame that many of them have to leave Mableton, which is what they call home. Even though they're homeless, this is their home. And they don't wanna go up to East Cobb to Mus Ministries, because they're saying if I go up there, I may not be able to get back. So we gotta do something, and we gotta do something quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
There's not any more cards?
Thank you for that, ma'am. With that, we'll conclude public comment for tonight. Item 10, uh, on our agenda is consent agendas, one item on there, which is, uh, our last meeting, the January 7th regular, uh, meeting that we had, the minutes for that. So at this point in time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Thank you, it's been moved and duly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Here in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Onto new business. Uh, the first item of new business tonight is a consideration and approval of resolution to fix and publish qualifying fees for the general municipal election for the city of Mableton, for the offices of council members, offices of districts two, four, and six. Uh, as many of you knew, when the city was stood up, uh, typical cities have, through their governing bodies, that half of the elected body, uh, is on a staggered term. Well, as, as a new city, one of the challenges that we had was everyone was elected at the same time, uh, so that, uh, several of our council members ended up with four-year terms, and some of them ended with two-year terms. So this would be specifically for districts two, four, and six. Um, with that, um, Madam Clerk, do you have any, uh, introduction comments about this item?
Well, yes, um, it seems early to be announcing this, but state law requires that, um, all cities in the state of Georgia publish their qualifying fee for those who are going to be running for office. We have to do it by February 1st. It's state law, so, um, I'm just announcing, and it's, it will be advertised in the paper, that the, uh, qualifying fee for districts two, four, and six will be $600. It's the same as it was previously. And that's it, we just have to do it, state law.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
Just a quick question on that. So do, would they, do they end up paying the county, or they pay the city?
Um, it's my understanding the county does it for us. Uh, we, we're in the process of doing a contract with the county for elections and qualifying. And, um, normally, the qualifying fee, the law says it goes to the city. But, uh, since they're doing it...
Yeah, the qualifiers will pay the city directly, and then the city will pay the county for the service pursuant to an IGA.
Oh, yeah, we'll pay very well on that, yes.
Is the fee the same for those who aren't currently on the seat? Or is it a different fee?
It's the same for anybody who qualifies.
If you're gonna run again, it's the same.
And Madam Clerk, just for clarity, the county will be conducting the elections, not the city, correct?
Well, we are in the process of, uh, negotiating or getting a contract, similar to all the other contracts with the other cities. Um, they do the other cities' elections. And, um, and we have another item that follows this one, where we say that we can have the county to do our elections. So, um, we should be hearing something soon. But they wanted us to pass this, this ordinance that's following, uh, first, before they actually give us the contract.
At this point in time, I do believe that all other cities, um, have Cobb conduct their elections. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
What was that comment? All of the cities have Cobb doing their elections?
Correct, yes. I, I think Acworth was probably the last one, I think, that was doing their own elections. I think Cobb does this now as well.
As big as Mableton is, that would be the best choice, because you would have to train a lot of people, buy equipment. It would be very costly, very timely, a lot of staff. So it's just the best way to go. Most cities do have the county to do their elections.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point in time, uh, I would like to entertain a motion, uh, to approve the resolution to fix and publish the qualifying fees for the general municipal election for the city of Mableton, for the offices of two, four, and six.
I make a motion to approve a resolution to fix and publish the qualifying fees for the general municipal election for the city of Mableton, for the offices of, uh, district two, four, and six.
I second.
Thank you, the motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of approval of the resolution, um, made by Councilwoman Oladipo, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the ayes have it. We will move on to item B. Uh, item B is the first read of the ordinance that the, uh, city clerk was just talking about. It's the ordinance creating Article II, which is the elections under Chapter II Administration, Administration of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinance and for other lawful purposes. Um, I know, Madam Attorney, you chimed in. Is there anything more you wanna add about this specific ordinance for the elections?
Yes, Mayor, so this is just part of, um, what Susan mentioned earlier about the IGA with the county. So there'll be three components to this, and you're, you're satisfying, um, two of those components, or you're getting two of those components underway tonight. And that is the, uh, that is the approval of the resolution, which is, um, for adoption tonight. And Susan, did the council vote on that? Did I miss that?
Yes, they voted.
They voted, okay, I just wanted to make sure you voted, because the, uh, deadline is February 1st. So you, you cleared that. And then the second, um, is gonna be the ordinance that we put in place that's consistent with, um, a substantial number of ordinances, and that's the one that we're discussing right now. Um, it's within the agenda packet, this is just first read. And this goes alongside with the county's, um, conduction of the city's elections, as well as giving, naming Susan officially, or the city clerk officially, as the municipal election superintendent. So that would be the point of contact, um, if the county needs anything from the city election-wise. And then the third component of this, which is not on the agenda, is the IGA. And that's what Councilman Ferguson was, uh, alluding to earlier, just, you know, what's, would be the responsibility for cost and et cetera. And that IGA will set out the cost that the county's going to assess for facilitation of the elections. They're typically, um, every, actually, everyone that I've seen for every county that I've ever seen, an election IGA, it's been proportioned to population. So I'm anticipating that's what the county's going to propose. Um, but we are still waiting for that. And I've been in contact, Susan has been in contact with the county and the Board of Elections, and that's forthcoming. They're preparing it right now, and we anticipate having that before your next regular meeting for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Council, any questions or comments?
Is that, is the cost fixed, or is it gonna, is it a rotating scale based on the number that we have, or is it just a fixed cost every year?
It depends, uh, from what I have experienced in my, uh, over the years. It will depend on how many precincts we have, how many people they need. It won't be the same for every city. And naturally, if we're 80,000 citizens and 36 square miles, we're gonna have a lot of precincts, a lot of people. And then sometimes, uh, it doesn't cost as much as you would think if there's another state election going on at the same time. Sometimes that gives us a break, because they have to do it anyway.
Right.
So, uh, we're just gonna have to wait and see how the numbers come out. And they really estimate, they don't really, really know until after it's over with, but they will give us, um, the, the contract will address what I do, what we do, and what they do. And then, um, they will pro-project a cost, but it could, you know, not be exact, because you, you don't know how it's gonna go until you get closer to the election.
And so, and then my second question at last. Um, love you, Susan. Is there a specific qualification that you need to be able to be that superintendent?
Uh, well, I've, yes, there's, there's training. I've had a lot of training, and, um, it, the law says the city clerk, most of the time, is the law is the city clerk.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, you're qualified, I do believe, Susan. I think you're qualified.
Susan, Susan does not want me to say this, but she could conduct the election single-handedly. She doesn't want to, so I know she'd want me to.
Well, she's going to this year.
I just need money, money, money.
Boy. All right, uh, Council, any other questions, comments related to this?
Sure, just to, um, just to make it clear. So the next, uh, Mableton Municipal Election will be November 4th, 2025. Qualification will be from August 18th and August 20th. Now you know. So if you wanna throw your hat in the ring, that's when they do it.
Awesome.
It's August 18th to August 20th?
For qualifying, for paying your $600 to qualify.
He's saying that there are only just a couple of days?
Three days.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, thank you, and we should have announced the dates.
All right, this is a, a first read on the ordinance, so there's, there's no vote on this tonight. We'll be bringing this back to ensure, um, we meet that timeline that, uh, our clerk has mentioned.
So this needs to come up on Tuesday? For a second read? Cause you said February the first.
Well, cause if it's February, we need to have this approved by February 1st?
I have to advertise the, um, qualifying fee by February 1st, and I have an ad already to the Marietta Daily Journal, so I'm happy that you all voted for it. But it has to be published, it's in the legal section, and, um...
We satisfy that in 12A.
I don't have the ordinance, but the dates, the dates of qualifying was, um, I didn't hear, uh, council member out's dates. Is it August 18th through?
Through August, uh, Wed- let's see, Monday, August 18th, 2025, through Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, beginning at 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m., with an hour for lunch.
Yes, and it's at our administrative offices. But I won't be doing the qualifying, the county's staff will come in and do the qualifying.
So the county staff will come in and do the qualifying?
They'll be at the administrative offices and, and, um, conduct the qualifying.
Do we need to amend a resolution there, since it specifies it will happen at 12:45 Veterans Memorial Highway? Like, is that...
Yes, that's where we'll have it.
Yes, we'll be in the office by then. Does our city manager got anything to say about it? So, um, so, yeah, that, so 12A has already been approved. Thus, our clerk can move forward with publishing. The ordinance falls outside of that, so we don't have to have that approved ordinance prior to. So if there's, uh, no other discussion on that, I'd like to move on to item C, which is the consideration and approval of resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to transition fire services by intergovernmental agreement with the county and for other lawful services. Madam Attorney, is there, do you want to, uh, speak to this matter? It's one of the IGAs.
Yes, Mayor, so Mayor and Council, um, but this essentially does two things. It notifies the county of the city's intent to assume responsibility for fire protection services, um, consistent with Section 715 of the city's charter. And the second component, and the effective date, actually, let me go back to the first component. The effective date for that will be the, the date that the county and the city and other cities execute a fire services agreement. Um, we've been in communication with the other cities, as well as the county. They provided me with a copy of that agreement. I've told them that, um, that this is coming before you tonight, that we're gonna give proper notice, and we're asking for the council's improvement, approval for the mayor to execute the agreement. So that's the first component of this document. The second component is that request for approval. So it's the council saying, yes, Mayor, you can further finalize the document, cause if you'll, uh, look at the draft that they provided, it has like comments and, um, edits on it. So we do need to finalize the document, but it gives the mayor to approve it in substantial form as presented. Um, and then I think that, uh, one thing I, I would just like to highlight is that, no, and actually, we've already discussed that, so we're, we're good to go. And if you have any questions, you can shoot the questions to me. Otherwise, the request would be to approve this resolution.
I don't, we good? Yeah. Yeah, I, since we have, um, a member of the fire department here, Deputy Chief, if you would take the floor, um, I think this is a, uh, standard IGA, but it is pretty important, because, um, as part of our services, this transition of fire service actually is one of the services that can make the city eligible to be a city. So this transitional service, uh, for fire, it's not one that we've talked about a lot. We talk about code enforcement, um, and zoning, and, um, and sanitation. We haven't talked about fire. Uh, but fire is one of those, obviously, it's an important service. But through this IGA, it actually will establish, uh, one, and so we'll have four services, um, that we are planning on having now. So Deputy Chief, if you don't mind, um, open the floor and let you have a few minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to come here and speak for a few moments. And, and first, let me say, uh, as Cobb County Fire Department, we are a very proud department to serve all of Cobb County, and, and providing services to the city as your fire department is not new to us. We, we've done that for Acworth, Kennesaw, and Powder Springs for many, many years, and, and we are so excited to do that for the city of Mableton. Um, it's an honor for us, uh, to do that. Um, you know, we are ISO 1 rated organization, which is the highest rating that you can get, um, through the ISO certification process. And that keeps your homeowner's fees as low as possible. Uh, most of your homeowner's insurance uses the ISO rating, um, as a criteria for deciding what your, uh, annual homeowner's fees will be. We're also an accredited agency with the Center for Public Safety Excellence, which means that, uh, an outside agency comes in, and they, with a fine-toothed comb, goes through our agency, and we have to be purpose-driven, meaning that we have to set criterion for where we're at, where we wanna be. And we've actually been accredited for four times now, so over 20 years. Every five years, we re-accredit. And so we have done that, uh, and we've continued to meet those standards each time that we are re-accredited. So, uh, we are a professional organization. You can call us the Mableton Fire Department if you want to. Uh, we are proud to serve you, and we look forward to continuing that service in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions?
I just wanna say thank you for your service, continued service. Um, I was, when we had, uh, an event last year, uh, one of the guys from the fire station, several of them, came up to me and said, uh, you know, just same thing, how proud they were, um, of running a firehouse in Mableton, and just how happy they were to be here and be at our service. And, um, again, standing up this service as part of the city of Mableton, and, and calling you guys our fire department. I don't know if you have a patch that says Mableton on it, but might wanna work on that one.
Can we work on that? Can we, can we scratch out?
Yeah, I don't know if you've noticed, but our fire trucks actually say Mableton on the side, uh, at the very top. So we, we've labeled them, and, and they're easy to, to identify. But we are equally as proud to be a part of the community. And I started my career in Mableton. Uh, my wife is from the Mableton area, so it's near and dear to my heart. Uh, I, probably my, my, the good old days, if you call them, were my times working down here. I really enjoyed it.
Awesome. Well, again, thank you, we do appreciate it.
Can I ask for a ride?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask for a ride in the fire truck?
For you, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Deputy Chief, we appreciate you.
Thank you, it's an honor.
So our next item, uh, is 12E. This is the second, uh, well, sorry, I'm gonna move forward. That is 12F, which is consideration and approval of statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement. As you all know, talking about services and how we are, ma'am?
May I interrupt?
Please.
Um, you need to vote on the...
On C.
C.
C, which is the resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the intent to transfer fire services.
Indeed.
You want me to say it? You want me to say it?
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent on the transition of fire services by intergovernmental agreement with the county and for other lawful purposes.
Mayor, uh, motion to consideration and approval of a resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to transition fire services by intergovernmental agreement with the county and for other lawful purposes.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herndon, um, any further discussion of this matter? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor of, uh, approval of the resolution on the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. So this, uh, item D is the ordinance creating Chapter 9, Fire Protection and Prevention of the City of Mabelton as a code of ordinance and for other lawful purposes. This is item D.
And Mayor, this is a continuation of the fire services transition, so the ordinance that I've put together is, um, it's, I think it's most similar to the city of Powder Springs, but we've made a couple of modifications to it, but it does two things primarily. One, it creates your fire code, which is, um, the good part about the fire code is that it's so heavily state-regulated that it's just an adoption of the state, um, standard operating protocols for fire, which is essentially, um, in its most part, what it's a readoption of. So this just re-adopts the county's fire protection code because theirs is very exhaustive, um, they, I can tell by reading that I went through it, that the county spent a lot of time and effort into creating their fire code, so it's just, and then that's, gives the, a level of consistency for the fire department too.
Correct.
So they don't have to adhere to any, any type of different standards, and that's what Powder Springs does as well, they just re, they have just read adopted the county's code, so that's what the first component of this does. And the second component just says it authorizes the county fire department to, um, implement the fire code within Mabelton, so it just gives the county consent. Um, this requires two reads, and this is, this is just the first read, so this will be back on the next regular agenda.
Thank you for that, Madam Attorney. Counselors, any, uh, questions for the attorney on that? None? Thank you, Madam Attorney, we will bring this up at the, uh, is there any urgency to this past?
There's no urgency, um, and that's because, uh, your charter, section 715 requires a 30-day period of notice to the county, so we cannot sign the IGA no sooner than 30 days, so that gives us more than sufficient time to have our second read.
Okay, great, thank you for that. So this takes us to item 12F, which is consideration approval of statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement. Uh, this effort was kicked off by Cassie Maslum, who is the Director of Emergency Management Services at Cobb County, who, uh, had sent me an email related to this, and then, um, our city manager was engaged. Uh, so, Mr. Manager, would you like to, uh, provide some commentary around the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement and why we are considering this for approval?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and counsel, yeah, Georgia Mutual Aid, uh, group is this agreement that allows, in any event of a state of emergency, where you have FEMA or even GMA, and of course, CMA, Cobb Emergency Management Agency, if there is a need for us to have extra resources here in our city, tornado, storm, or anything that would tax our citizens or our city and require help, we're automatically included in this agreement to, uh, be eligible for help from anyone else that's in this group, something we do, uh, in Georgia, and so, uh, Cassie, as you know, is the Director of the Cobb Emergency Management Association, she wanted to make sure that we had it on file, knowing that we were beginning to assume services for public safety, that we would also be in that agreement. In a nutshell, this makes sure that if we need to be eligible for FEMA funds or GMA funds, then we already got the requirements, we're part of the group.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, I'd like to go ahead and, and entertain a motion to approve the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement.
Motion to, uh, consideration approval of the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement.
I have a second.
Thank you, uh, any conversation or discussion about this matter?
I, I do actually want to bring one thing up, um, as it relates to this, and Mr. Manager, you mentioned, um, you know, the state of emergency, uh, I do want to make sure that we bring, uh, our own emergency management, um, ordinance to the table, I think it's, uh, we've, we've gone long enough now as a city, I think we're, we're, we need to be better prepared for emergencies, we've seen our fair share already since we've been a city, and, um, it's, uh, to go along with requesting, um, funds from GMA or support from GMA and, or FEMA and other organizations, uh, it's important that we have our own emergency management ordinance in place so that we can, uh, be in place to handle emergencies in a more effective manner and be able to request, um, support ourselves, uh, from the governor and, and the like, uh, in towns of emergency. So, um, I will take a vote on this and, and, and seek approval, but I also want to make sure that we bring back an emergency management, uh, ordinance for ourselves, so...
Can we, can we put a timeline on that, because?
I, I'll, it's...
Okay.
It's coming.
Cause we talked about this last year, so I want to make sure that we...
Yeah.
Chug it down the line to get this done. That includes even the, we talked about the warming centers last year.
So, um...
Like, I know we need to get stuff in place, that's all. I know we had to get people in place, I get it, so I just want to make sure that we're marching towards that drum.
As a counsel, I'm certain that we understand much better now than we did last year, the importance of having certain ordinances in place.
100%.
Um, so therefore, we'll, we'll bring this back. Um, I, I, I'm not going to commit right now, but I will say that, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's on, this next meeting we have coming up, or the meeting afterwards, but I don't want to, I don't want to put the cart before the horse here with, uh, the date, because I want to make sure we're crafting, we're crafting an ordinance that's going to work, um, but I think we'll have something together pretty quickly, at least for a first read.
Put it on the list.
Thank you, sir, sorry on mine, so, but, uh, duly noted, Councilman Ferguson, thank you for that. Uh, so at this point in time, I'll go ahead and call the question, all those in favor of approval of a statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item 13, which is other business, uh, and this is really discussing about the, uh, transitional notices to the county as a whole. Um, we've, we've talked around it quite a bit tonight about, um, IGAs and other efforts, fire services and whatnot, um, but all this has to be done in concert with the county, uh, and the way that our, uh, transition reads is that we have to notify the county, give them sufficient notice, uh, when we are transitioning services from them, even when it comes to sanitation, which, you know, they aren't actually providing that service now, but it's still something that we need to notify the county on. Uh, Madam Attorney, is there, um, I know we've discussed some specific dates around those, would you mind, uh, speaking to that and recounting some of those?
Yes, um, so Mayor and Council, this is one of the most important documents this year that you'll execute, um, as you're all aware, this is the culmination of tremendous work by the Mayor and Council, multiple planning retreats, multiple roadmaps, multiple scheduling, probably, um, more than you anticipated before you took office, more work that you'd have to do, um, significant and extensive administrative and departmental collaboration just to bring the council's vision to fruition and to be able, um, for us to be able to establish these dates. Um, so this is a very important document, and it's a reflection of the hard work that your departments, um, as well as the council, has put in over the last two years to, to get to this point successfully. Um, so basically, what this document does is that pursuant to 715 of the city's charter, this provides notice to the county of the transition of additional services, um, from the county to the city, and that transition will be solid waste management, which, um, and if you look at your email, I've sent you an amended version of this, so you can follow along if, if you prefer. Um, but solid waste management, it notifies the, the county that effective, uh, February 26th of 2025, that the city will assume that service, planning and zoning, effective as of March 3rd, 2025, um, and the enforcement of building, housing, plumbing, electrical codes, and similar codes to those, effective as of March 3rd, 2025. Um, you have the legislation that you've put in place for the, the T, the administrative components and the enforcement, um, so now it's just a matter of, um, Bill doing what he does and, and making the magic work on the administrative end, and, and he's put a great team together, so, um, I have the utmost confidence that it's going to go fantastic. Um, and if you'll note, um, I received, um, you know, council feedback and comments on this, and I've made those adjustment and changes, um, particularly Councilwoman Ock, I've included the stormwater and the parks and recreation exclusions here, um, so that's now incorporated, and then, um, Councilwoman, um, oh, the doctor also wanted that parks reference in here, so we're just letting the county know that, uh, this, the item B functions are not being transferred, but it's those three services that I just mentioned. Um, and with your approval tonight, we will make sure that, uh, this gets properly submitted to the county tomorrow.
Thank you. Um, it is, it is monumental, right, so it's definitely a, um, a milestone moment that we're having here, and we do, um, should acknowledge that as such. I've, um, said, and along with other councils, that, that we're moving as, as quickly as we can, but being as responsible, uh, with doing this, but there comes a time where, you know, it is time. Um, so, you know, our city manager, we talked about this a lot, about when the date was, and I, you know, I want to make sure that we didn't, from up here, we didn't impose a date that you guys were not prepared and ready for, um, and we've continued to talk about that, so, um, with, with these dates being provided, with department leads in, in place, um, you are ready for these dates.
We don't have a choice. We will, look here, it's, it's going to jump in the water, split the Red Sea, whatever we do, we going.
Fair enough, fair enough, and I, and I do acknowledge the, the callouts, because I do think it's important, as we talk about the services we are transitioning, there are some services that we are not transitioning. Um, there are some that are, are more short-term, I think others that, um, we are not looking at taking on for the, for the foreseeable future. Um, there may be some services that we have to take on in the future that we didn't necessarily anticipate. Um, you know, I have said, uh, before, that I think it's prudent upon us to do a cost-benefit analysis on all the services, um, and at some point, I think we'll get there, right? But obviously, the focus right now is getting these services transitioned. Uh, I know there will be questions about this, parks was one of the ones that Councilwoman Ock made notice, um, that, that we will not be transitioning, and they'll not be on there, and so I think it's important to note, um, simply because we have talked about parks a bit in the past, um, and at this point in time, we, we simply aren't there to be able to work with the county in a way to be able to take over the parks. I know it's something that, um, many of us would like to see, I know I speak with people in the community, uh, and they ask a lot about parks, and when we will take over park systems, and when we will get, uh, you know, youth programs established, uh, for our kids here in Mabelton, and when we will have parks, um, that will be under our purview, um, at this point in time, so, uh, we are striking that from the proposed list, and we will have more discussions in the county in the future about, um, being able to provide those services for our citizens. So with that said, uh, counsel, any other discussions on this notice of transition? All right, hearing none, um, Madam Attorney, go forth, and let's go ahead and notify the county and move forward.
Okay, but we'll need a motion and a, and a vote.
All those in favor, or, oh, let's, let me entertain a motion, um, well, you know, the way this is written, it's, let's entertain a motion to tr, to provide transitional notices to the county.
Well, I would read the top of the actual document, um, and if you look at the, the very top, it's the, the bold heading, I would just, um, a motion to approve a resolution providing...
Amelia, I thought we already did that, Amelia? Did we vote, uh, on this for 12C?
Um, no, 12C, I believe, is the fire resolution. It's very similar to this, and I'll also be providing...
Oh, for fire services, okay, just wanted to make sure.
But if you have the, the, the document in front of you...
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, provide notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to transfer and transition additional service responsibilities and for other lawful purposes.
All right, definitely. Thank you for the motion, in three seconds. I think we can only count one. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, uh, call the question, all those in favor of approving a resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to transfer and transition additional services, responsibilities, and for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the ayes have it. And that will move us to item 13B, which is HB 581, discussion. Uh, this was an item that we had on the previous agenda, um, HB 581 being a, um, bill that the, uh, was passed at a general assembly relating to a floss, a floating, uh, sales tax, uh, for the county. At last meeting, uh, we made sure that all the council had relative information from, uh, GMA, as well as, or the PowerPoint presentation that was done, as well as the video, uh, from meeting that was held on, on Cherokee Street with the county. Um, this is, without going into all of the detail about this, um, what we decided to do about the, this, um, HB 581, uh, it is contingent somewhat on what other cities do and what the county does, county has decided that they were going to opt out, as well as many of the other, uh, cities, or, or many of the cities within this county. The difference that the city of Mabelton has is that we don't have a property tax, um, and so without having a property tax, we will not initially be eligible for this, uh, even if the county and others actually approved it. Um, being able to roll back a property tax means you have to have a property tax, and because we don't have one at this point in time, um, we don't, we don't have one to roll back, I'm simply saying. However, there was still some discussion that we had about whether we were to opt out or opt in, um, I think some of the consensus was around us to do nothing and actually, um, be able to take advantage of a floss, if some point in time in the future it did become available. As it states right now, um, we don't, we wouldn't have that option, um, but because we don't have property tax, it would have no benefit, no immediate benefit or detriment to our residents. So, um, at this point in time, I actually like to hand it over to our city manager, cause I know he's been doing some work as well. I do still have an outstanding question, um, it really points to the legislators, right? Because this bill is a brand-new bill, um, people have questioned some of the gaps, maybe, in this bill, or some of the things that have not been clearly explained, and I know with our city manager, I mean, our city attorney, she has, uh, an attorney fixated, laser-focused, I think she said, uh, on this HB 581. Georgia Municipal Association has been laser-focused on it as well, uh, about how it potentially impacts cities. We are unique, though, in the fact that, um, being a new city without a property tax, but also being the largest city in the county, um, poses some unique, speak on behalf of all the council, um, I'll let you speak and then hand it over to our city attorney, um, and then we can decide how we're going to move forward with this matter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, I think the, the, the real point of you discussing that, um, is that, of course, we as staff, or even the city attorney, we only advise, we can't make this decision for council, so we can give you information, uh, give you our feedback, but it's a council decision, and if the council was going to opt out, you were under a timeline where you had to, uh, do public hearings, three public hearings, and have a, a resolution to opt out by March 1st, and when you look at our, when you look at our, uh, council meeting calendars, we got February 12th, I think, February, maybe 24th, and that's two meetings, we would now be in a position where we have to do special calls, so we just wanted to make sure the council was aware, that if there was a consensus to opt out, you got work to do. Now, that's the reason to make sure, is discuss openly and publicly. Uh, my personal opinion, and I've done a lot of research, I've been to both meetings, and I've listened, um, the state was responding to a cry of some of their constituents that market values of houses were, um, causing their, their property tax to skyrocket, and if we're very detailed about it, it's not necessarily the municipality portion of the tax they're paying, and I'm not afraid to say this publicly, but it's that school tax piece, that's a big portion of the tax bill. And it's, whenever a market value of someone home, if someone went from $200,000 to $400,000, those large portions of market value increases were being rolled into somebody's mortgage or their tax bill. So the state created this House Bill 581 called Property Tax Relief. And it was set up to incentivize municipalities to get in the House Bill 581 for the potential purpose of doing a rollback from the floating local option sales tax, the floss. So, it's a lot to it, but to the mayor's point, we know that the Mableton feasibility study shows us operating without a property tax. However, we also know the winds of politics and different negotiations with, especially we got to negotiate with the county. We don't know what the future is. And if we're ever put in a position where we had to, or we were forced to, or we had no choice, being able to participate in a floss would give this council the opportunity to roll back any property tax in the future. This council sometimes has to consider that you are making decisions that may affect the next elected body. You all may not ever feel the impact, but there's going to be councils that come after you and they will be very grateful if you position them to make sure that they take care of the citizens if that happened in the future. So I, I'd kind of summarized, there are a lot of nuances to this. Every city and the county must have a homestead exemption, plus there must be a referendum every five years and an IGA for all of us to participate in a floss. And as you stated, I won't state, there's two cities, but I can't speak about one city, and that's us. We right now are one of the cities that do not have a property tax, therefore we don't have a homestead. And so without that, we could sink the entire county not being in a floss. So it is in my opinion that you at least position the city for a future to have the option, if they so choose, to be able to benefit from a sales tax that could roll back a property tax. If you opt out, you do not have that option. Again, that is my opinion. The charter does say the city manager can participate in discussions, but he cannot vote. And I want to make sure that I made that clear. And I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council. But the purpose, Mr. Mayor, for you making this a public discussion is that if the council decided they want to opt out, you have a timeline, you need to act now.
Indeed. Thank you for that, Madam Attorney.
No, I have nothing further.
Thank you. The outstanding question that I do have is really baked into the legislation, the law itself, where it speaks about 50% of the body, in this instance, the county, has to agree to this. And if the county opts out, or if the, if county opts out, county is 50, is over 50% of the population of the county, even if you count all the other cities. So I still have an outstanding question where if they decide not to do this, and if they are 50% of the entire, if their population, meaning the unincorporated portion, is more than 50% of the population, then this kind of becomes a mute point.
They could still participate, if they opt out, as long as they have a homestead exemption, is my understanding, we asked this question, they could still participate in a floss. Now, to your point, and I, and I don't have, I'm actually looking it up, that 50% threshold, I believe it cannot just be county. It has to be agreement between certain counties and cities. And that agreement between the certain county city must account for 50% of the population. For example, if the city of Austell, Powder Springs, and Smyrna all went into this agreement with the county and for some reason they did not clear the 50% threshold for this market, they could not enter into an IGA. They have to have 50%. Now, let's say we stay out of it and they still achieve 50%. Let's say Acworth, Kennesaw gets in and they achieve that 50% threshold. We wouldn't have to be involved in the IGA because they've cleared that hurdle. So I think that 50% says you must have, at least when it involves the IGA and the participants. And I don't want to go a record to verify, that is something I can verify. But I don't think the county has unilateral power to just say, we're going to just kill a floss. It does have to go by referendum and you do need to get, I think, 50%, including cities and counties, to be in agreement with the population base for it to be successful. I'll look up and verify it, but that's a great question, though.
Thank you.
And based off your recommendation, how soon will we have to make a decision?
If you were going to opt out, y'all got three meetings before March 1st.
Yes, because.
We have to have three meetings, they have to all be published, we have to give notice to the legal organ, then we have to schedule them, no sooner than seven days apart. And we have to complete and accomplish this within almost, what, a 37-day period. So, and if we're past the deadline, obviously for publication this week, so you have to wait another seven days before we can even get the first notice of the paper. So I would say if you're going to opt out, I would make that decision tonight.
Yeah, and that's another, that's the reason we brought it up last meeting is so that we could come back this meeting and be very clear about this. Because opting in does not require us to do anything. We just move on to the next item on the agenda and that's that. So it's really only if we decide to opt out that we actually have to do anything. So really, it's, again, one of those inflection points we're at right now.
Mr. Mayor, for the sake of the council, if I will, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
I think some are wondering, well, why is the big cities opting out? I mean, we should be following them.
They have theirs already.
They, they, they are well-funded. They have property tax, Marietta has a water system. They are well-funded. And the Consumer Price Index, they're actually saying that their homestead exemption is better than the state's. The state allows for a Consumer Price Index increase in a homestead exemption that a municipality could collect. Where currently, the county and other cities have a freeze, which means it, once you file a homestead exemption, it never increases. So they're saying theirs is better and they don't need, they don't need the state kind of telling them how to run their stuff. And they're well-funded with property taxes and other source of revenue. I mean, well-funded. And so we're, as Mayor mentioned, we're a new city. As, as the city attorney said, we're in our stroller.
Or you're crawling.
Crawling, yeah, crawling. We don't have the funds that these large cities have. And so we need to always position ourselves to take advantage of one strength we have, and that is our population and our size.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, to your question earlier, I did peek at the statute. If you want to write this down, if anyone's interested, it's subsection 488109.31, but it's subsection D, which sets the, wait, no, it's subsection, let me go back down to it. Yeah, it's subsection D1B. But it does state that to approve, you would need that 50% component. So I think it may be problematic if the county does not move forward with.
That's my take on this. When I read it, knowing the population distributions of the county, also knowing that if we add up all of the city's total population, I may be incorrect, but I'm quite certain the total population of the, all the cities does not equal the unincorporated population of the county.
Yes, and if that's, if that's accurate according to this. I'm not going to say it's prohibitive, because before I say that, I'll assign more people to research it, I'll do that myself. But I'll say it may be problematic.
Okay, yeah, it, it seemed to me from reading it, that's almost a poison pill.
And, and if the county opts out, then like, a lot of the benefits that we're talking about are null and void anyway because it's at a county level?
Let me read something here from the frequently asked questions. The 50% thing, we definitely need to get it detailed. Here's item 10 on the notes. If the county opts out of the homestead exemption, will this impact a municipality's ability to impose a floss? It says yes. Similarly, if a county opts out, all municipalities in the county will be ineligible for the floss unless the county has another eligible homestead exemption in place. Cobb County has a homestead exemption in place. I still think, so even if they opt out, as long as they have a homestead exemption, we could still have floss. But the point is, that 50% threshold. And I think, I'm looking for that myself, too, but that, that is one that we need to be sure of. Here's one thing for sure, if we're not in, there is no discussion.
Yeah, right, exactly. I, I don't think that, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy it, right? That's not a decision whether to opt in or out. I think we, we still opt in, but then the question just becomes, will we be eligible or not? Will anybody be eligible depending on what the county does?
Right, because if everybody else opts out, then what real opportunity does do we have?
If, if they have a floating option sales tax, it will still allow us to take advantage of the one that the state is saying that we put, has put in place. The counties are saying, the county and, I don't want to go through all the cities. Marietta was, was public about it, right? I think they, they mentioned it was in a paper stating that they felt that theirs was much better. So they were, they were not going to opt in, but.
Has Austell made a position on this yet?
I, I do not know if Austell's made, made a position. I definitely want to public.
They, they are the only city that.
Does not.
Does not have a floating option exemption.
They don't have a homestead exemption. I definitely can't speak for them, but I do want to read who, this is what I was thinking of 50% and Amelia, please make sure that this correlates with what you read in the law. Who must sign the intergovernmental agreement to authorize the referendum for the floss? The county must reach an intergovernmental agreement with municipalities levying a property tax that represents at least 50% of the total municipal population within the county. The minimum required does not preclude more municipalities than those representing 50% of the municipal population from signing the IGA if all parties agree. Any municipality that does not sign the IGA is treated as an absent municipality and receive proceeds from the floss based upon the size of its population. In short, that 50%, and I'm seeing it applies here, is that when it comes to, the county must reach, it must reach an IGA with the municipalities levying a property tax that represents at least 50%. So that, that IGA must include 50%. I don't know if it applies to, if, if they're not in the IGA, you're right. So let's say, if I'm reading this correctly, let's say the county says, we don't want to play and we're not signing the IGA. And, and if we couldn't achieve 50% of the municipalities of the county, then, then at that point, the missed the population signing would not, we wouldn't be able to do the referendum. If I read this correctly, I think.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was referring to earlier. If the county opts out of floss, then we lose them.
That's what I'm getting to.
Despite of the IGA. And then losing them, it appears that we could lose the 50%. And that's why I said it's the item that looked precluded. But, you know, obviously, if you took that position, we'd do additional research.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a position tonight?
It, either we, we do nothing, which means we opt in, or we decide to opt out and, which means we've got to talk to the clerk about getting dates on there. I, I am under the opinion that we give, we gives ourselves options in the future, which means we opt in, which means we do nothing. If, if, I mean.
I'd like to make a formal position and make a motion that we opt into the statewide floating homestead exemption established by House Bill 581.
Motion has been made on the floor to formally take a position on House Bill 581. I think it's something that we can do, although there's no further action placed on it.
Yeah, if the motion, if the motion passes, then we would not.
Right, there's no, there's no action, post-action on that.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and it's been seconded. I'll, I'll, any discussion about this? We've had a bit. I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of formally taking a position that we will opt in to House Bill 581, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. As a city, we will formally take a position that we will opt into HB 581. I mean, that we will take no action, there will be no further discussion or meetings on this matter. So, thank you all for that. With that being said, that's all of the business we have for this evening. Mr. Manager, I would like to give you the floor for any announcements you may have.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'll get my list up. Wanted to show some gratitude, Mr. Mayor, towards staff. In my absence, we had Ms. Juliana acting city manager doing storm cora. They, her and Ms. Jeffcoat really kind of organized some things and made sure everybody was good to go. I think that she handled also the meeting and some agenda items in my absence very well, from what I'm told. So I wanted to give her a shout out. Also, I think to Mr. Ferguson's point, Mr. Xavier Ross, who secured our first fleet vehicles, and also our build outs. He's on, he's been in charge of that since, taken it off my plate. And it's good to see, you know, to get extra help so I can get more things done. And he's handled those things very well. We also want to thank Ms. Rochelle Blaylock, who's an HR person, but she's filling in temporarily as much as she can as an IT setup until we can get our new IT tech. I'm always glad to see employees willing to step out their roles and comfort zone to help the team. And then, of course, Candace, our HR lead, continues to push to getting our staffing hired. And thanking our city attorney for her grind with the URA. I, I don't know if people realize, I don't know if she slept. She was gone all the time. But it's, it's a proud thing to know that the city now has in its possession 10 acres of land. So also, I suppose remind the mayor to announce the land ownership.
That what?
I suppose remind the mayor to announce land ownership. I messed that one up, didn't I? But anyway, good progress on our two buildings, Mayor. And so those are the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Attorney? Have any comments? Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Just quickly, the, I just want to keep, keep kind of the people that are lifted, keep people lifted up compared, those who are still in LA. I was, I'm really familiar with the areas that were burned out, really amazing. So just keep those people lifted up. Keep the people right here in Mableton and the metro area lifted up, too, because I look at the snow that was here lately and I just thought about the people that were, that are living under bridges and don't have warming facilities and that kind of thing. So keep them lifted up as well. And just keep us lifted up as a mayor and council and staff because I'm really proud to be working with such stellar people who have a heart for service. And it really takes a hard for service to do what we're doing. We're getting paid so great, so I guess that kind of, that kind of compensates. But really, yeah, I, I, I can't say enough about everybody on staff and the council and the mayor for what we've gotten accomplished so far and our new people that are on board as well. So everybody stay warm out there, stay safe, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ola Doppa?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just, I want to make a public comment about the young man who lost his life to gun violence at Parkview apartment two weeks ago. I want to send my condolences to his family, his friends, his loved ones. I got on the phone with the city manager and Councilman Davis, just trying to brainstorm what we can do to continue to make Mableton a safe place for all of us who live here. We got in touch with Cobb County Police and all of that to say that we are very invested, not just for, you know, safety for District 1 and 2, but safety for the entire city. not just for, you know, safety for District One and Two, but safety for the entire city of Mableton as a whole. Um, and also condolences to the family of the little girl who lost her life, um, at Lindley Middle School. As a parent, that is not something that you want to hear, and it is very heartbreaking. And I just, uh, I want us to continue to lift her parents, her friends, her families in prayers. Um, lastly, I want to thank the mayor for, um, agreeing to take the waste ordinance of the agenda, um, and my suggestion, and that of a few other council members. We've done a lot of work on it, but simply put, there is still more to be done. And, um, I want, my hope is that when we bring this back to you, you can see and you can tell that we listen to you, and, um, we will work together to craft something that works for everyone. Um, well, that's all I have. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Please stay safe, stay warm, and we'll see you, um, next week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jeffcoat.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for always showing up and supporting us. It's extremely cold outside. Um, it looks like we've, we've had a true winter, uh, this year, with temperatures getting down in the low teens, and, um, you know, being in the greater Atlanta area, we're not used to having so- snow twice in a month. Um, and so, it has snowed a lot, and my concern, as having been mentioned by a few folks here, is that during this cold we- weather, it affects, you know, our most vulnerable communities, uh, those that are elderly, homeless, as well as, you know, animals. And so, you don't see a lot of the work that we do behind the scenes, but I've done a lot of work with Cobb County, uh, Mus Ministries, as well as Family Life Restoration Center that's in my district, to see if we can find an interim solution for this, uh, with, um, you know, establishing some sort of warming facility, uh, in the interim. Mus Ministries has set up a warming facility. Um, it's not a long-term solution, but it's an, an immediate solution. Um, I know that, you know, some of the folks that are vulnerable, don't want to travel, have to travel to Marietta, but in the interim, it's something that we're continuing to work out, and I do want to thank you all that were involved, um, in some of the work that we've been doing to ensure that, um, you know, uh, everyone's safe and, and not in the cold. I'm sitting up here, and I'm freezing, um, and we're inside. And during my bivouac days, I used to be outside in a tent, so I know what that feels like. Um, and so, we just have to be mindful of, um, of, you know, those that are in our community that, that need, uh, assistance, that need our support. Uh, we had, uh, we've had a few complaints, um, from residents in district, in, in my district about Wallace Park. Uh, there have been some young adults and some kids that have been driving recklessly in the park and doing donuts in this cold weather, right? Um, it's been an ongoing issue for the past couple of, of months. There was an alleged, uh, report of a fire at the same location as well. I think it's in, uh, parking lot two. And the good news is, I had an opportunity to speak with, uh, Captain Best, and he reached out to me to let me know that arrest was made on Sunday night, and the suspect was, uh, transported to Cobb ADC. So, kudos to Sergeant Gully and Officer Hasani for responding so quickly to that. Uh, they're going to continue to patrol that area and monitor it, but it was a collaborative effort, of course, and I'm glad that they were, um, took immediate action to make sure that we were safe. And, um, so, thank Cobb County Police, as well as our Sheriff Department. As, as, uh, Councilwoman Oladipo mentioned, um, you know, there's been some heartbreaking incidents, tragedies that happened, uh, at the start of this year. Uh, two incidents of gun violence. Twenty-seven-year-old lost her life, as well as a twelve-year-old student at Lindley. Um, and this is just a, a reminder of just how pervasive gun violence is in our community. It has no place in our schools, no place in our neighborhoods, and no place in our community. Um, and so, it just robs us, right? That those, those two young adults won't have an opportunity to, you know, live out their life. And so, my called action is that leaders, parents, educators, uh, community members, we got to come together to do what we can to strengthen school safety, uh, community engagement, mental health support, as well as stricter, um, gun measures. Um, so, it's something that we cer- we certainly need, need to do. I don't know if you all had an opportunity to commemorate, um, you know, Dr. King on Monday, there was a lot going on on Monday, but we are called to service, all of, all of us up here have a heart to serve, and so, let's just continue to do the work. I'm proud of what our staff has done, and I want to thank our city manager and everyone that, that continues to push forward, uh, to build this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Pert- Mayor Pertim. Councilwoman Ock.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I don't have too much for tonight, I just want to, um, express gratitude. Uh, we had, um, the MLK holiday this Monday, and for those of you who took the holiday to serve others, whether it was a coat drive or invasive, uh, privet removal in a park or, uh, litter cleanup, whatever it was that you were called to do, that you did and served the community, those are the changes that I really think make a difference here in Mableton and build the community we want to see and live in. So, thank you for that, and that's all I have for tonight, so just thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman, um, Ferguson.
A good friend of mine, um, Dr. Ben, when I was running for office, um, I, I had a conversation with him, and I told him that I'm not a politician. And he said, "Oh, yes, you are, and that's the only way that you're going to be able to get anything accomplished, um, as a city councilman." I continued to say, "No, Dr. Ben, I am not a politician." He said, "Yes, you are. If you're not, then you're not my vote. You're not my candidate." Well, luckily, he decided to vote for me, um, and here I sit as the city councilman for District Five, having to make some very, very interesting decisions and do some very, very interesting conversations in the background. Everything that we do behind this desk is precluded by hours of conversations, and I still owe the city four cents, because they overpaid me. I need to make sure that I, um, get that back to you on my W-two. But they overpaid me by four cents, and I, I really felt something about that overpayment, because I was thinking about what could we do with those four cents? What could we do with all the four cents that we are overpaying the city council that are sitting up here? You think it's a wonderful thing for us to be in this position and be able to have these lovely eyes staring back at us as we go through some of these situations and go through some of these issues that we have to battle. I tell you that my job is, um, validated. When I get a phone call from a constituent, and then I call that constituent back, because I don't generally answer my phone, um, and we have a conversation, and we talk about the issues that they are having. This council is up here for you. Get in touch with your council. Get in touch with your mayor. Get in touch with your city manager. Let your voice be heard. As we talk about this, um, sanitation ordinance, it's one of the biggest things we have to do as a city. You don't know the hours that were spent creating it and then discussing it. The reason it wasn't up tonight was because we were all politicians, and we all made sure that our voices were heard on this council. So, now, citizens, don't complain. Make your voice be heard. If you, I, I said this, I was looking for the, um, the date that I said it, but I told you some time ago, months ago, if you don't talk, don't talk. If you don't have a voice, don't complain about this city. Make your voice be heard. The city's here. The city's thriving. You heard the city manager's conversation about our budget. We're making it happen. So, get on board, help, make your voice be heard, be a good citizen of your city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Harden.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As, as usual, everyone has pretty much covered some of the things that I want to say, but I'm going to quickly say that, um, you know, as a council, we really do care, you know, and oftentimes, we get emails in from people, um, who are concerned about decisions that we make, and they offer feedback, but sometimes there is a, a little bit of an allusion to the fact that, um, you know, we're inexperienced, or, um, you know, we're not making good decisions, and, and so on and so forth. But, you know, as, um, Councilmember Ferguson has said, oftentimes, after our meeting, we are literally going at it in the background, trying to hammer out things that we feel very strongly about. And, you know, again, this, this, uh, you know, solid waste management ordinance was a really big deal for a lot of us. And so, even though you don't always see it in the forefront, we have conversations in the, in the background, because we hear you, and I know I do, for sure, and we all do. When you all come up, and, you know, we had a public, uh, you know, hearing on this, we heard what you had to say, the concern you had for the, the trash haulers that serve you, the special services that some of you all receive, the concern about fees, the concern about putting smaller trash haulers out of business, we heard you. And as a result of that, we wanted to make sure that the ordinance that we put forward was something that would incorporate what you had to say. And so, as a result, as several of us have already mentioned, it's not on the agenda tonight, because, you know, with all of the back and forth we were doing, we had not come to consensus, and we recognized there were things that we had to address, and so, we decided not to do it. So, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, we all have a heart for Mableton, no matter what, you know, our initial decision was, for, against, city, it didn't matter. At this point, because we are serving you, we care about what Mableton looks like, what it feels like, we are concerned about our homeless people, we are, are concerned about our services and what kind of quality that we're going to offer to you all. So, we are really working hard and doing the best that we can, no matter what it may look like from the outside. We really care, and we're working really hard on the inside. And the other thing I wanted to touch on really quickly is, um, our young people are connected but disconnected. They are connected on social media, they're on TikTok, but they don't know how to talk to each other in person, they don't interact with each other in person. Um, you know, they have issues, they don't know where to go, and when I think about the tragedy that happened at Lindley, it just broke my heart that a young child, really, you know, that had her whole life ahead of her somehow felt in that moment that that was the only solution that she had. So, I think and know that as adults, let's try to make an effort to tune in to our younger people. You know, some of us have adult children, but we have children in our community, we run across children at the grocery store, what have you, but let's take a moment in our neighborhood and, and, uh, our communities to kind of touch in and, and maybe take a young person under their wings so that they have an outlet, because we don't know what kind of, uh, situations they may have at home, we don't know whether they're dealing with bullying, we don't know whether they're feeling as though they don't belong, or they can't connect with people. So, if we, you know, take a, an opportunity to maybe invest in someone who's younger, then maybe we can make the difference in them thinking that they don't have any other option to seeing all of the options that they do have in their life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I speak with our, um, Cobb County Police Chief probably every other day, um, usually via text. And I was texting with him last week, um, and, you know, I, my goal, I think collectively our goal for this city is that, um, we can have a safe, equitable, innovative, caring city that's one of the best in the state, if not the country, to work, live, play, and worship in. That's, that's my goal, that's why I sit in this seat. And, and talking with the police chief, um, you know, I, I told him one night, I says, "I, I'm getting concerned about, um, the challenges we're having in the city." Um, and I remember telling him, I said, you know, "One, one shooting is one too many." One shooting is one too many. The next afternoon, he sent me a text message, and he says, uh, he said, "Mr. Mayor, I hate to give you some bad news," he says, "but a thirteen-year-old girl has been shot in a middle school in Mableton." I've got a thirteen-year-old daughter, um, that's in middle school here in Mableton. Police chief tells me things, uh, that, that happen as soon as he gets them, and he says, "I can tell you this, though, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you information as soon as I get it, but it may not be accurate, because I'm giving it to you as soon as I get it." I usually then turn around and share that with the council. I didn't share that right away that day. I was checking to make sure it wasn't my daughter. We have challenges in this city, a lot, um, but it's no more so than other challenges that other cities face. I simply believe that we can face them stronger and better, because we are stronger and better. I believe in this city and have believed in it since the day I moved here. We're going to surmount every single challenge that we have. We're going to meet it head-on, we're going to deal with it, we're going to conquer it. I'm a Marine, I joined Marine Corps the day I turned seventeen. We have a saying, it's called, "You adapt, you improvise, and you overcome." We will do that with every challenge we have. This, this has been some trying times, without a doubt. A lot of times, when, when, when people come up to, to the podium, uh, they air those grievances, and I'm happy that they have the opportunity to do so. But I'm even more happy that we have the opportunity to make changes and do something about it. It may not happen immediately, it may not happen today or tomorrow, uh, but these are challenges that we are working on. You know, we immediately became the twelfth-largest city in the state of Georgia. And you guys have heard me say many times, like, we got to act like it, but there's also a realization that there ain't but so much we can do until we get to the point where we can do more of those things, right? So, know that we are putting in the work, we're putting in the time, uh, to ensure that Mableton does become and will continue to be a safe, equitable, innovative, caring, and welcoming city. With that said, I want to get out of here and make sure you guys can get on home. So, I'd like to entertain at this point in time a motion to adjourn.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, motion to the meeting seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Here are no opposition, ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned, thank you.